Okay, before we start the meeting, we have some propretions to give out tonight. So, Councilman Lord.
Thank you, President Bedell. It's my privilege to be the council representative, to award certificates to the junior lifeguard competitors. So, when I read your name, please come up and stand in front, okay? Briefly, eight junior and three adult lifeguards from Long Beach competed in the 2021 Lifeguard National Championships in South Padre Island, Texas, early this month, and all in Long Beach very proud, finishing in the top ten in each of their competitions. So, when I read your names, just come up and stand in front of the council room dressed in red and white. Matthew McCaffrey. Molly Jordan. Alan Turner. Jessica Bassett. If I may pronounce this word beginning. Aline Trichter. Sean Boyke. Somebody last name. Casey Kimmich.
Yay, Casey!
Udo Diaz. And now for the adults. Ben Freyko.
No, can't get it for me, gotta get it for her.
And last but not least, I do to DJ and Lynn O'Sullivan. Sorry, I had to be too busy.
Need everybody to get a little bit of a lighter.
Best coaches.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Feel free to stick around for the morning party.
Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, August 17, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Dr. Roll Hall, Councilman Lord.
Present.
Councilman Mandel is absent. Councilman Trusson.
Present.
Vice President Harris.
Present.
President Benda.
Present.
But the President of the City of City Manager, Don E. and Corporation Council, which is very good. So, that was soon to be done.
Councilor Assistant to City Clerk, Claudia.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second meeting in August. Hope everyone's having a good summer so far. Just want to point out that Councilman Mandel has developed pneumonia, which is why he is not here. So, we wish him a speedy recovery. We'll look forward to seeing him again soon. So, with that, we have the City Managers' report.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Our first department is up, is the Building Department, and then that is Commissioner Kimmich.
Good evening. First, I'd like to... First, I'd like to thank the Council for recognizing the Junior Lifeguard program. It is a great program. Obviously, I'm biased, my daughter's in it. I've been working for lifeguards for 39 summers now, but we appreciate that. Took a long trip, two flights each direction, and they did a great job, but thank you. Now, onto the Building Department. So, obviously, the Council is aware, the public might not be. The Building Department is made up of myself, the Building Commissioner, I have a zoning inspector, two code enforcement officers, a fire building inspector, and one part-time plumbing inspector. All the inspectors are New York State certified, and every year have to take 24 hours of in-service training to keep their state certification to enforce the New York State Building Code. With that being said, we also have two full-time clerical clerks, administrative agents, and one part-time clerk. Got some figures together for the Building Department activity, perm number wise. From January 1st till August 16th, 2019, the Building Department issued 587 permits. They took it outside of the timeframe for this year also. 2020, in that same timeframe, we issued 832 permits. Even during COVID, we were up, you know, almost 300 permits from the year before. In 2021, this year right now, we're at 1,201 permits. It is quite busy. A lot of people are doing work on their homes. We have a lot of big projects going on. It keeps us busy. Same way violations, obviously, we need to keep people in check, whether it be overgrown grass, illegal apartments, Airbnb's, enforcement actions. The timeframe in 2019, we issued 315 violations. In 2020, 275, and so far in 2021, 301 violations. We presently have 10 open zoning violation cases in the Long Beach City Court. Obviously, the court proceedings have been quite slowed down since the COVID. The courts closed for a while. It didn't slow down, unfortunately, but unfortunately, it's slowed down bringing the cases to fruition, whether it be fines or always compliance. So, that process due to COVID has slowed down, but things are all picking up now. Mr. Barrios, as you just told me, we got a $1,000 fine today on an Airbnb in the West End. So, we're all moving forward with that on our enforcement. Good news is fiscal year '21, it just ended June 30th. The Building Department was $437,000, approximately over our anticipated revenue for that fiscal year. As I mentioned before, we have a lot of large-scale projects going on. We have a 21-unit six-story condominium being completed right now at 661 West Broadway. We have a 23-unit rental building being completed right now at 251 East Park, the old home of Central Federal Savings, and the old time period here. I remember that was when my first savings account was, the pig. South Nassau has been a block pavilion going on. They did a little snag with some groundwater issues. They're awaiting their de-watering permit to be approved by the DTC, and then things commence there. You see, everybody's aware of the Super Block project is finally coming to fruition. I myself have worked on that project, reviewing multiple plans over the last 25, 26 years, and I'm hoping that this is it, and we're going to have a project built there. They've already started some infrastructure work, and they have their permits for their parking garage and the groundwork, and hopefully, within the next week or two, they'll have their permit for the three buildings. We also have an interesting project that just began at 135 East Park, the old back building. Nobody noticed it was knocked down this week. And that's going to be one of our first, what I call transit-oriented developments in town. So, it's a block and a half from the railroad station. It's going to be commercial at street level with apartments above. And we're hoping that this is the way of the future, downtown's alive, to have transit-oriented development when people live there. So, you know, hopefully, this project, you know, comes out okay, works, and we can go from there. But I have, obviously, any questions, or we will answer them all.
Commissioner, if someone has a complaint, a zoning complaint or Airbnb, what is the best way for them to contact you in your department?
They obviously can call 431-1005. They are not required to give their name. We also have an email address, illegalrentals@long beach anyway dot gov. And there is also a hotline number. Just wanted to double-check that that's still in service. But we take anonymous complaints. We don't ask people to give us their names. Obviously, if they want to, they're more than welcome to. But we don't want to give anybody the opportunity to say, oh, I was told by the Building Department that Mr. Smith is the one that called. So, one thing, everything, even if we have a name, it's completely confidential. And we actually have some sections in our local code. If somebody were to ask for a disabled who made a complaint, it is a code violation. But we get complaints via email, telephone, you know, anonymous letters in the mail, and every complaint is investigated.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. It was extremely informative, and it's great to see your part at work, as usual. So, thank you for you and all the efforts in your department.
Thank you.
I also want to ask, in terms of progress, in terms of reporting illegal rentals. So, obviously, it doesn't happen overnight once someone calls. What's the estimated timeframe, and what's like the process in general?
So, it can become a long, drawn-out event. Ring doorbells would become our enemy. When I first started working for the Building Department, my job was solely to get illegal apartments when I started. And obviously, back in the early '90s, it was a lot easier than today. But we still, we have to do a complete investigation. My zoning inspector typically was a member of the police department, who'd go out on a weekend evening when people are typically home. During the day, most people aren't home, they're working. So, they'll go out on a weekend evening, they'll knock on the door, they'll see what's available, and ask questions. A lot of times, we get enough information then and there that we can issue violations. We get IC plate numbers. Then we have to summon it, expose the court. That usually, we get it in the court case of at least a month. And then the court process becomes long and drawn out. A lot of these people that we prosecute for illegal apartments now have to legally evict these illegal tenants. And as we all know, evictions right now are very difficult during the COVID thing. And I'm not sure how many of them, what majority of our zoning cases in court now are waiting for the illegal tenants to be evicted. So, that is going to draw out the process even longer until we can get rid of them, because they can't remove the illegal kitchens, the illegal bathrooms, or whatever it may be until the tenant's no longer with there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, thank you. Just one question. The building, the new completely constructed building on the corner of both the Green Boulevard and Broadway.
Yes, 661 West Broadway.
661. Do you foresee that being occupied this year?
I would hope so. It's probably about 95% complete. Inspector, she's already done a few walkthroughs towards the end of the job, and it is almost done. What happens now, though, is if it does become a condominium, everything has to get approved by the State Attorney General's Office for the affording plan, and that's all out of our control. So, until they can get that approved, they can start selling units. So, I think, I know we've gotten a lot of phone calls from people inquiring whose building has problems or complaints, but, you know, if it becomes a rental, it can be occupied much quicker. But if it is a condominium, then that could actually draw out the process.
And the last question I have is, would you say that 1,200 permits so far is above normal? This is '20s, '21, too, is about 587. And I just don't know, because COVID, where, is it backlog? Is it, in your opinion?
It is above normal. I can't compare it to 2012, 2013, and the sanity that we were just inundated. But under a normal year, it is higher than normal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing none, thank you. This is for, this is for the Council, not for the public. These are reports for the Council.
Okay. Our next department is Community Development, the Director, working house.
Good evening. If you'd mind, can you give me the mask? I have a super boy. So, this report is mainly about results. So, previously, we did a provision of where we were going with community development, but tonight is about results. So, one thing is that the Magnolia Community Center has now been created to be a resource hub for city residents. So, we talked about having a place where the city residents, people, if they're in need, developing them by coming in, filling out an intake, receiving documents, documentation for as far as income, family size, reporting it, and providing the resources they have identified as being in need. We categorize it by, youth, senior, youth services, senior services, and adult services. And this is unique because our community development, CDBG funds are now directly aligned to those three services. What we can provide with our youth, who are youth, who are seniors, and who are adults. What we did with the online staffing, so we figured a staffing model to replicate that, secure the funding for community development, created this communication of what that looks like, and also partnered and collaborated with innovation in Long Beach that are already in the world so that our, it will afford some of the cost of the program, sort of cost, by collaborating with those who already own it and strengthening their numbers as well as what the city is doing, which is always a question of what you're providing. So, that resource hub is launching in September, which people have all the hours. Staffing will take the phone and the intake room, and you can actually come in and call through our online form and tell us your needs and who you are, and the city will be back in. Those are what are required, because the GDB is to develop the community that need. So, 51% of our own funding funds, both AA and CDBG funds, is to provide those type of services. Where we lack price, that was alarming in the budget, having documented recording, and also providing it ourselves in-house versus outsourced in these type of programs. And here are some results. We have a tech third day for our seniors. I see some seniors here that are doing the building. In our next Magnolia Room, we have a nonprofit that comes in and provides technical assistance for seniors. You can bring your own device, or the community development has CDBG has provided some tablets and laptops, and the senior can come in to learn how to do Facebook, FaceTime, Zoom, email, scanning, and all of that. So, we're very excited about it. I have given out some pictures that have been circulating around, so that was very important. In addition to that, we delivered food from Massachanne, Oregon, and we now have a collaboration with two seniors. It was a three-day, uh, City Manager, sorry, on a occasion, Police Commissioner and Crime Commissioner as well, help deliver those. All this work is done by the staff and community. At the Magnolia Community Center, so we're just vision of who's doing what. We contacted the seniors on lead assessment survey, those who said they were in need of food, called them, arranged a delivery date. The next project is the Leeward Crime Year's Project. We are happy to announce that we're in a private stage of this Leeward Crime Year's Project. It started about 2017, 2018. There was a unique voice of what is needed in that part, and now we are upgrading and enhancing it to provide more of early childhood apparatus for young and topsy kids. This was the bulk of the community. We have a new, in-house open, and we will find out what they think in the process. I think how many days of their, we'll be back.
Yeah, they'll be done tonight, Mr. President. One piece that wasn't shared, and we'll take care of that, it's going to be shared with us.
Great. So, it is great apparatus for youth, and it's a seesaw, all area required, and you have. Then we also talk about other upgrades and enhancements to that part as well, to have accessible and easy to, sorry, I keep on. So, the next one is a program especially to City Manager that I gave. She wanted to build an employee literacy program. We are happy to announce that we were able to add adult services for that and collaborate in the Adult Learning Center here in Long Beach. So, this provides a six-week program for any employee in the city of Long Beach at the Magnolia Center. We're looking for a class of 10 as a pilot program just to make sure that we're effective. This is new, so I will work out with the City Manager and department heads on how we can recruit and motivate staff to attend, with no prices, but this is a program. CDBG will be providing the laptops and space for that. Finally, we have internship program that came out of community development this year, which is a change. We had rehired from the high school that worked in the Department of PR. Thank you, John, for telling me your team's order from Black Hill. We had, yeah, sorry. Community development and the criminal officers as well. And again, this is happening during COVID, so everything went well. The intern, I mean, we develop business owners to identify the jobs that they have available and how can they apply for it. They identify any youth programs other than what we provide, and they need to create an intake. They'll find a project, create community assets, and have the reason, identify services all around Long Beach and attach it to our resource hub. And the day trips camp, we have about 40 students to attend the day trips camp. This means they're finally, finally, they tell each other, if you'd like to see it, they're going to have one trip every day during the week. And it was a great program to see kids running around, you know, ice cream, and long walk trips. That is my community development people.
Monique, where is the talent show?
Oh, good question. I haven't answered it, and then it's been on the table.
I can hear the question.
Well, where is the talent show? I think it's at the middle school, actually. They are in the middle district. It's at Long Beach, sorry about that.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, Monique.
Sure.
Hello, good to see you. Thank you for the extensive report. You're certainly busy. I have a general question. How do you recommend city council members use the effectiveness of these programs?
Great. When I, I believe it's my budget narrative, I created goals, which is about engagement, involvement, attendance, tracking, recording. So, to go back to identify where we started with how, that all access, how many residents, how many people actually attend the program for attendance purposes, especially coming after COVID, and for us to actually provide the public service to different facilities that do outside of what we're usually doing. So, it's a different location, we have only one Magnolia. So, I think we're looking at engagement, participation, to even look at how the funds are being used and what they're being used for, if there's a direct relation to the service than the, I guess, some items that are purchased.
So, do you basically submit all of this information to HUD annually, annually?
Yes, you can. These are all under private documentation and reporting that we have to do. I keep also looking at our community development as a whole, as far as what we report to CDBG and the Massachanne Department. We have, here, we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand units sitting there. So, I think looking at how the funds are being spent rapidly, how private spending, so the Star Gate and the Cheetah Gate, I think is really important, and we have to like expenses.
So, would maybe in the future, I'd be able to look at the transparency portal to find out some of this information?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. And I have one last question. I'm really thrilled to hear about the literacy program, especially for city employees. I think that's something that's so important, and I commend Ms. Jaden, of course, for recommending that. It's brilliant. I would also hope that we would be able to work with some of the unions to make sure that we get the minimum of 10 people entered court.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is the engagement, that we all need to guard a little bit, because, you know, the city, we don't advertise as much to the whole moment of working. And one thing, City Manager and the ninety always say that we need to publicize what we know at the moment. I think that's a great way to start, to put a little more on doing it, because it's something new. But then, you know, involve all the stakeholders to increase the participation in the moment. And there's a third day for the nonprofit, uh, help Councilor Stress and Healthy Way. So, it's also like letters are in point. I think that's the first phase, to let everyone know that three moments, and put everybody in, and why do you deserve it?
Keep up the good work. Great work. Thank you.
I'm just, just, I know about the literacy program. As we found out that there are several employees that have difficulty reading and writing and doing basic math. When we first start, there will be several employees that we can identify that probably will not sign up if they know that they're going to be in the room with others, so they don't want the others to know their capability. But we're going to include them within the 10, even if it has to be a one-on-one. It is important that everybody is on a even playing field. So, to get there, we got to make sure that everybody has the ability to read, write, and move forward with mathematics. The next person is John McNally, to talk about public relations. Actually, that's our last person for the evening.
Stop me. Just one quick question before John stops talking. In relation to that program that you, so, is it just to help support improvements in literacy? Or is there any plan to tie it into, maybe at some point, getting GDBs or things like that?
Yes, there is, there is plans for that. As Monique was talking about, you hear a lot of programs that are going on, and we're using CDBG dollars. In the past years, all your CDBG dollars were never used to the fullest, or they ask for programs, and then they, CDBG approved those programs, but we never used the dollars, just as in the capital budget, we got the money, but we didn't use it. So, now, what we're doing is that we're identifying any program that CDBG will pay for and how it will benefit the community, and we're asking for a modification so that we're not sitting on, I believe when I first started, we were sitting on $400, or almost $600,000 per previous year. Now, we're spending a previous year's money, current year's money, and in anticipating what we will get in the future. The future dollars will be able, I think, will increase, because they will see that we're spending the money now in-house and doing the program versus giving the money out to others to do the programs. So, GED, anything that we can help anyone in the community achieve to enhance their life, we will look at.
John, I think just let them know what CDBG stands for.
Community Development, what we're at.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. City Manager, you asked me to give you just a brief overview of what Public Relations Department does, and then give you very quick updates on a couple of matters, so.
It's very.
I guess, I'm off. I've got to quit it. It helps if you turn it on. You have to turn the head of the public relations department.
Thank you.
You bet. So, Public Relations' job essentially is to ensure all of our residents have the information that they need to be informed and engaged to this, as well as promote the city beyond the barrier of. We work across all the departments to communicate the roles and projects each plays in moving our city forward, from new business openings until, and to file information about the pandemic and all things in between. It's the PR Department's job to ensure that the public... public is informed. Uh, the department consists of myself and Tracy Murray, but we also work hand-in-hand with the events department, so Carrie Ann Troy, Tracy and myself, uh, really do everything together between communications, um, and, and events. So the department utilizes several vehicles to carry out its mission, our website, uh, is the primary one, it gets approximately a hundred thousand unique individual visits every single month. Our Facebook page has twenty-six thousand followers, uh, we're starting, well, we've been growing our other social media, so Instagram and Twitter, between the two, have about six thousand followers each. Uh, really, this is, uh, out of the events department, but Carrie Ann's been sending out a weekly email box, uh, that gives everybody an update on what the events ahead are, that list is now up to three thousand individuals, and we also have an emergency alert system that sends out robocalls, texts, um, and emails, and the list for that is approximately twenty-three thousand people. So, uh, that one is finally important, we would very much encourage anybody that does not get our emergency notifications, to please sign up for that, you can do so on our website, uh, longbeachny.gov slash LDready, and then also the events email, if anyone's not signed up for that yet, you can send an email to LDEvents@longbeachny.gov, um, and Carrie Ann will sign you up for that. In addition to that, we record, uh, we generate quarterly mailers, uh, that highlight what's going on at the city, um, and give residents valuable information on things like hurricane preparedness. Some of those, because of budgetary constraints and COVID, um, have not fully electric, uh, or fully digital, I should say, um, at this time, but, um, as budget allows, we will transition those into physical mailers again. So I will say, one of the key focuses that's been implemented under this administration, uh, is ensuring that our various sites and platforms are really operating purely as governmental and administrative pages, not politics, um, and not political. This is crucially important in making sure that the information that we send out there, uh, is really trusted, especially during times of emergency. So with that said, um, emergencies and pandemics, so I'll just give you a quick update on COVID. Um, as of yesterday, the numbers are pretty fresh on this one, uh, fifty-nine point six percent of Long Beach residents were fully vaccinated, that's the full population, fifty-nine point six are fully vaccinated, that number, for comparative speaking wise, uh, for Long Island, is sixty-one point five two percent, so we're approximately two percent lower than the rest of Long Island and everywhere. For the week ending today, there were sixty, sixty-four new positive test cases for Long Beach. That puts us approximately on par with where we were last October. This time last year, we were looking at two to three cases per week, right now we're at sixty-four, so Delta variant is here, and it is spreading. Um, Nassau County's positivity rate at this point in time is three point seven percent, that puts us on par with where we were mid-November of last year. Um, hospitalizations are at a hundred and seventy-five on Long Island, again, that's where we were last November. So the numbers are not where we hoped they would be, uh, for the middle of summertime, when we had a real lull last year, uh, with Delta variant, sort of seeming that all vets are on the table, uh, we will continue to monitor the numbers and update the public about that. Uh, there was this news on we expect the third dose, it's obviously available to those with the compromised immune systems right now, but the general public, it looks like it's going to be available, as it's not a booster shot, it's the same third shot, uh, will be available for individuals eight months after the second dose that they had. Uh, and we do, we've been working very closely with Pat Sine at El Nassau, and amazing to our community, they, uh, gonna be bringing the vaccination deal here on Wednesdays, when we have, uh, when we have the farmer's market here, we're marketed right now in front of City Hall, it looks like November eighth is going to be the first day that that's here, but we will confirm, we don't know exactly for sure just yet. Then the last thing, on a lighter note, I wanted to update, um, we launched the, the city manager's direction and suggestion, we launched a beautiful curb appeal contest, where we invited residents to submit photos of their, um, car stopping, uh, or eye-catching, or, you know, neck breaking, beautiful homes, um, and we really got a great response, which is exactly what we expected, because we know how many people in Long Beach really take pride in their homes. Uh, we will be announcing first thing tomorrow morning the ten finalists, those will all get posted on Facebook, um, for the community to vote via likes. Uh, voting will end, uh, over the weekend, and then the winners will be announced first thing on Monday morning. That is my report, question?
Tomorrow's recycle is?
Tomorrow's recycle is, my house calls me glass, metal, and plastic, especially after a birthday weekend.
There is a, Kevin, right there.
No.
I didn't watch it.
I did not watch it, thank you.
Um, I have just a couple of questions, John.
Sure.
If you can. I don't want my mic. Um, communicating information about this city to potential new residents, would, or are we making, uh, reaching out to maybe local realtors as far as maybe a flyer, or, uh, because what I see sometimes is people move here, and other than their local realtor, they're friends, and it's, it's not for us to teach, but I do know there's like the important information that when somebody does buy a home, it's reduced to basics, definitely.
We had the, the city manager's office, uh, earlier this year, put together a two-site glossy pamphlet, which is the beginnings of a welcome packet for new residents, uh, that has all the important contact information for the city, for, you know, medical services, um, not just, you know, internal information, but external information as well. Um, and one of the things we're doing is, we're working with our website company to, Carrie Ann's done an amazing job updating and simplifying and streamlining over the last couple months, we basically know all of what the, what the capabilities are, um, we are reinvesting in the site, upping our plan with them a little bit, um, and we'll start really working with economic development, community development, once we're able to do some more things with the website, um, that's really where people go, where new businesses go, um, to check out a community, that's their first stop, and we want it to be reflective of not just how great our city is, but the opportunities that exist here for both resident and residential residents.
Also, what you need to know is that we're going to, we're working on a QR code, so that somebody can go up and just see, especially like on the beach, there will be different things that you want to see, you just go on the QR code, the thing will come up. So that will probably be launched sometime at the beginning of the year, so we're, we're trying to come into the process.
Thank you.
We've, we've, several days, so.
Yeah, could you, you may answer the movement, the welcome packet establishment, kind of thing, um, the health fair that recently took place, how could you, uh, was it successful? Was it, were you?
Uh, you know, it's, so it's really, I mean, that was the, it was put on by the CSEA margin for the CSEA, um, you know, their membership health fair, essentially, um, but we also had, you know, they, they were, they were bringing the vaccination deal from outside in El Nassau, as well as baseline, baseline health was here doing, uh, testing and health screenings. We didn't, we obviously wanted a really good turnout for those, they were open to the public, but we didn't try to be pushing on CSEA members, so we waited, sort of intentionally wait for it to promote, uh, but I can tell you that fifty-five people, uh, received their vaccinations that day, which in this day and age, when you're sort of trying to pull people out of the woodwork to get vaccinated, um, was a really good, was a really good showing by, you know, by the vaccination centers, they were thrilled with it.
And the last question, um, is, who will be the judges, if you know, is for the, uh, two house curators?
So there was, there was an internal committee to narrow it down, but then it's going to be, you know, people's choice, so it's public opinion on Facebook, by, by a number of lives that either.
Similar to what the chamber that is doing?
Yeah, we collaborated with the chamber for the fall, for Halloween decorating, and then we did the same thing for the, the holiday decorating in Centerville last year.
Yeah, that was very, very successful, in my opinion.
All of them have been, all of them are, hopefully, uh, you know, are becoming an industry.
Thank you, John.
You bet.
There's no other questions, I conclude my report.
I just had one comment, Mr. McGowan, I just want to commend you for elevating the communication function in this city, uh, for your continuing efforts to improve, improve communication, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, uh, we'll start, we have a couple of hearings.
Before we start, I just want to thank Nassau County for doing the North Handering was due last week, there were over thirty participants that will receive their North Handering. That's what.
Hey, my first public hearing, please, for ordinance, medical ordinances, of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic.
I'm gonna assume that's our police commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to, you're fire squad. Would you like to just, uh, talk about it, or do you have any particular questions that you'd like to offer?
I want to, uh, talk about it so the public also is still.
So basically, the disordinances for impounding and for the bullying of motor vehicles that are either, that are in violation of city ordinances, vehicle and traffic law, or are a problem for public safety, we can, you know, in the city, it gives the city a newfound ability to actually boot vehicles that are stop law or have other forms of, uh, vehicle and traffic violations on them. Um, it also creates, believe it or not, more of a inconvenience for people who have their cars booted instead of impounded. So if you boot a vehicle now, you'll be able to go down to the precinct, and you'll be able to pay the administrative fee and the boot removal fee, as well as bail for summons in case you want to prove not guilty, you can go to court and if you're found not guilty for the summons itself, you can get a refund or a partial refund if the judge showed wishes for the actual fine, but that, that would be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, right now, if your car's impounded at the weekend, or the Monday morning, to get your car back, and we thought that this would be a, a more convenient way for residents who did violate the law, did have outstanding summonses, to be able to get their vehicles back in case you have to work on Monday morning. Um, so that's in general what, what this is for, there were particular, uh, wording issues last time that came up, that's all been corrected, and, um, I'm going to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, questions from the council members? Can't see that in the peanut gallery there, what can I give a question? No? Okay. Liz, did you say you did?
No, no.
She does not. Oh, sorry, that's what she said, she did. All right, seen none from the council, uh, okay, questions from the public, or comments? Okay, going once, going twice, all right, seen none, let's close that here.
On to regular calendar, any ones who will live in a party, may be twenty-two months of your deep twenty-two months, or two full years.
Uh, before we do that, I just have one typo correction, on the May eighteenth minute, the bottom of page five, the last, um, it just says, uh, funds were available this year, and would they would, the first would needs to come out, it just says, and they would be explored, just a tiny one. But other than that, I'll let the motion through. Thanks.
Hi, love.
Go ahead, come on, the words.
Yes.
Not to mention our trustee.
Yes.
Can I express my yes?
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
I am due ordinance to man over distance city, how much part of motor vehicles and traffic, hearing has been helped with this, I'm already, I agree the resolution of the legislation, city manager, change agreement of four DTS, a partner of syncosystems.
I see Jamie's here, so we don't need to hear from him often, so assuming he's been called.
The current phone system was originally installed in twenty-twelve, and it had a significant upgrade in twenty-seventeen. Um, right now, we are looking at an end-of-life server and router, um, so rather than invest cost, um, a lot of money and expensive equipment and maintenance, uh, we are looking to place the phone system in the cloud, which is where most of everything at home is. Um, the, that will also allow us to continue to use some of the equipment, like phones. Um, we won't rely on the phones, um, because you could use other types of equipment, like your computers, the, um, work as phones, you can use your cell phones, if, uh, an issue happens with any of the, um, connection, you would have the ability to use your cell phone or computer anywhere, uh, in the United States, it would not be tied to Long Beach, which is, um, an issue right now. If we had, we have one, one failure right now, so if one of our pieces apart, where goes, we completely have no phone service. At the time, through nine-one-one, nine-one-one is controlled by Nassau County. So, um, so in using the cloud, we would be able to have better business continuity, uh, lower maintenance costs, um, lower costs in general, because we would not be, um, relying on expensive equipment. Um, the other issue is that the equipment comes with end-of-life, um, so usually, um, what happens is, uh, when it gets to that point, even though the equipment could still be working, um, it would, it, it would have no support if it works again. So that's where we're at right now with, um, with the phone system. So rather than look at another hundred and twenty-five thousand to replace what we have now, uh, we're looking at about roughly thirty-eight, um, most of that, um, person, professional services to install, uh, the actual licenses for the service, uh, we're looking at eighteen thousand.
So this is a VOIP system?
Yes, so, okay. We, we have voice now, um, but it would not be in-house.
Okay, so it doesn't require people out there.
Okay.
So in, in future budgets, our, our maintenance costs will go up eighteen thousand per year.
It might drop, because we, we still pay maintenance now on, on the, on the computer, by, on the, um, equipment that we have, so every year, you're paying the maintenance, a support maintenance for, for the equipment, so it probably, um, yeah, it, it chances it.
Jimmy, is it just the, this building, the, what numbers, like footprints?
No, no, it would be the whole thing, uh, all outside numbers and inside.
All outside.
Right, that's, that's the other thing, um, you would, you would be including numbers outside, right now, we have separate connections, because of, um, there's no infrastructure to explore that, so, at an outside location, we would have a, a, um, Horizon Bios or open, uh, service, and we would get home service or that, so we would forward all those numbers into the, uh, the cloud, and all the numbers would be controlled out of one place instead of.
Certain, like recreation, like, or, all different, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, they have all questions from the council? Does this mean the city manager won't be calling me on a can, two cans, or start any time? All right, uh, any questions from the public? It's the last.
Just, just pick up.
Okay, uh, for the last, um, John, I saw this, uh, we went to this, uh, about a year ago, and it's, uh, it's good if the internet goes out, the phones in the building go out, but like he said, you can then use your cell phone, and it's, the phones that are in another place with internet continue to work, and what it's done is allowed each of us to have a, an office phone in our house, and so that's really good, but we do lease the phones, I assume we're going to be leasing it?
No, we're, we're using current equipment, we're not, we're not leasing new phones.
We have art equipment goes voice over internet right now?
Yeah.
Okay, and so is there a monthly cost to this?
Thanks, that's the cost, so the eighteen thousand would be, would cover that also.
So eighteen thousand?
So we have current equipment, we're not paying for extra equipment, we're paying for the service, for the cloud service.
So we've had the voice over internet all along, so we are using it?
No, we use it.
We'd be using it, but we, we got in-house equipment.
Yes, the servers, the servers and routers are all in-house, so if it fails here, it fails completely.
Okay.
Which is what happened a few months ago when the system went down, was a bad equipment, and we had no phones in the city for several days.
So we won't leave rather than you want?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, any more questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item four.
I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to continue this role of cooperation agreement. The county of Nassau receives funding for the Cisco Systems and wireless communications funding of wayback.
Is that our police commissioner again?
Yeah.
Good evening again. This is an international agreement between Nassau County and the city of Long Beach to give us, I believe, three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of equipment for our public safety communications. It's basically to bring the fire department, police departments into a more centralized location to create greater efficiencies. The county has given some grant to purchase the equipment. The city's forces are to actually build out the actual space where that is to take place. So we still haven't finalized exactly where it is, but we think we have, we have an area. So it is actually to create greater efficiencies and to get the police and fire department to start to communicate a little bit more efficiently because there's been posts from approximately.
All right, any questions from the council?
I, I'm just not understanding if this is actual, if you could actually be equipment that are assets that go on the books? On, on the ballot?
This is part of the question, the equipment.
This is going through an expense account? So I can't spell if it's an asset or not, this equipment?
So basically, what happens is all the equipment that needs to be built out for these things, we lay it out, the county reverses.
So do these assets get tagged and go on the books as assets?
Yes. They become ours. Yes.
All right, any more questions from the council? Seeing none, any questions from the public? All right, seeing none. I mean, this is obviously a good thing. We're bringing our technology into the twenty-first century, so. Thank you, and let's move on to item five.
I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to continue providing a comprehensive, thank you, sir.
Evening. So I ended up the lockdown here, the city, right on.
We can't hear you.
Make it out of the hole.
Thank you. Okay, so at the end of last fiscal year, city issued an R F P for the banking services. Majority of the city's accounts are currently with the Capital One Bank. This is done for several reasons. Obviously, to follow our own investment policy that requires us to diversify our deposits and minimize concentration rates, as well as its how they to bond for N R P for services. Please, a couple of years, as far as I'm concerned, hasn't been done in many, many years. So we got responses, and we are transitioning to, we inform three banks, Chase, T V Bank, and Capital One, that they will be our banks and will diversify that between those banks. And we've informed those banks, and we're starting onboarding costs.
Does going from one bank that's, are going to require any additional resources to track the fact that we'll have three banks instead of one?
Um, it will require going from one bank to three to transition to other banks will definitely require jeans and my staff time to make sure that it's all set properly. I look forward to these, it's no issue.
All right, any other questions from the council?
It's, it's according to the investment policy that you want to keep all your eggs in your basket, so it's good.
Yes.
They're all very interesting. Are all the signature authority the same one in your bank? The one's Capital One, signature authority, T V Bank? You would usually have two signatures?
Well, there's various levels of control, so you have the, yes, you have at least two signatures on each bank, and also you have designated people to control our deposits of change.
All right, any more questions from the council members? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Okay, seeing none, thanks, Nina, and let's move on to item six.
I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to general fund budget.
Connecting again?
Um, yeah, if it's true or connection of wealth, it has to do with the boat. The fourth person will be outlined by the county, so we're recognizing whatever their contribution will be and post-rabbing of that, the team is an extent, so that's as far as I'm involved in our tax plans. I'm glad Commissioner talked about it, Captain Southey, move on.
So at the time, the boat sank off the shore, there was the matter of where the boat actually rested. We went back and forth with the sheriff's department determining whether or not it was going to be their responsibility because there's provision in state navigation law that says that wrecks abandoned boats are, boats are actually the property of the sheriff, so that it can be dealt with. But the sheriff's department, and had to talk with them, felt that it wasn't considered abandoned because we knew who the owner actually was. So then we started working with the county police department because the actual waterway itself is the county's. So the county, the National County Police Department, in conjunction with their Deputy Commissioner for Public Safety, or the Commissioner for Public Safety, which is the state of Fox, agreed to reimburse the city of Long Beach for the, for a total amount of twenty thousand dollars, which was the amount that this turned out to be, to actually take the boat off of the shoreline. The actual operation that took place was a conjunction of salvage company that was engaged, as well as beach maintenance, sanitation department, everybody working together to kind of hook this boat, drag it in, and then finally get it up on shore. Fantastic job done by the beach maintenance crew to get that done. So Tommy Kenner and the Pumper Works team was fantastic job on that. I would also like to say that the, you know, it's nice that the county actually took responsibility for this and didn't try to just leave it on us because that was the risk that was faced. And it's also great that our beach maintenance department and salvage company was able to get this up on shore. Because if it turned into a salvage that was going to raise the boat and move it to another location, it would have been well in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if there's any questions before that, please.
All right, any questions from the council? Seeing none, any from the public? Okay, thank you, let's move on to item seven.
Item seven is the resolution authorized transfer funds for the twenty-two-one, and we'll keep this with you.
Um, yes, this items pertains to the city's procurement of the cyber, the security insurance. At the time when the budget was prepared, we didn't have the quote from the brokers, so we got the quote on the deed was, it happened to be the number ten thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So we're asking as well to approve of the transfer of the funds from the contingency to the annual given insurance line to cover this expense.
Okay, any questions from the council members? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, thank you, Nina, let's move on to item eight.
I implore the resolution restated by the city manager September the third, December ninth, twenty-one.
Okay, well, that is pretty straightforward. It's a holiday, a huge holiday on the night of that meeting, so we're moving it back to the Thursday. So any questions from the council about that? Okay, any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the council.
Onto the voting. I implore the ordinance to redone ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I will.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes.
Yes.
I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to turn agreement of four D T S a partner of Cisco Systems. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will. Sorry, carry on. One second.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to continue providing a comprehensive and wireless communication for the county of Nassau to receive funds for the procurement of wireless communication for the, and related items. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Who's there first? Elsa.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to continue providing a comprehensive and wireless communication for the county of Nassau. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord of the Lord.
Thank you, Nina, uh, yes, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. I implore the resolution authorized by the city manager to general fund budget. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. I implore the resolution authorized transfer funds for the twenty-two-one, twenty-two this year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. Finally, I implore the resolution to reschedule the budget for the county of September for Thursday, September ninth, twenty-one. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes. We wait for your call, please.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Lord of the Lord.
Yes.
Councilor Trust.
Yes.
Vice President, yes.
Yes.
President, yes.
All right, now we're going to move up there. Most people don't leave the team for three minutes. Let's look up here. And our opening act is completely black. And Mr. Lester?
Lord of the Lord of Long Beach, just a couple of quick things. The A C, we didn't update the report on the A C here, and my understanding is in the weight room. The A C's been off for a week. We go complain that sweating too much. So we keep a recording of that. The second thing is the boardwalk bikes. I know I sound like a broken record on this, but I still, when I go up there, I can't believe how dangerous it is. I watch the little kids run across without looking. Little kids just don't look. And people speak down there, and someone's going to get hurt, remember that? And we have no signage or signage that nobody sees, and nobody really looks at. And there's got to be a better way, they can't remember. And finally, I see we're all wearing masks here, and a lot of people are not comfortable coming to these things. They're not comfortable coming out in public. And I can't, I would like to propose that we resume, resume meetings. It doesn't seem to be any issue, you know, it worked very well during the pandemic. We're still in the semi-pandemic state. It allows people to participate in the meetings. Not that many people used it, so it's not abusive. It's not something that takes that much time. But it does give people the opportunity to appear, you know, to ask questions and to appear with well care. And I don't see, you know, it just would be nice if we could resume it.
So just for clarity, I don't think you're proposing we stop live meetings and go back soon. Are you not hearing, you're proposing we supplement the live meetings?
Yes, yes, just for the people who don't feel comfortable coming out. And you know what, there, we had some elderly people who wanted to attend and sometimes they find it difficult. And it just, there's no reason not to. We have the technology to do it. You know, people are kind of used to it. We did it for about a year, and it worked out very well. And why not? We, you know, it gives people an appearance of more transparency, more participation. And it just seems like it would be something that would be well served to the public.
So to answer your last question, this staff and I actually have been talking about that to see how that can be done.
Great minds think a lot.
Yeah, great minds think a lot. So we are, we have to get some guidance from the state. So we are looking at how we can do both live meeting and Zoom meeting. We will be getting together, beginning of next week, because we have all time for our next meeting. To see how we can do that. Tommy Kenner is here. If you want to come and give an update on the A C. And the A C here and the A C in the right back.
Good evening. As far as the A C is in here, the V I P, the unit, that we had to update our children. As we put that on, we found that there was a leak in one of the gaskets, so we ordered a new gasket just to be safe. No sense in starting off and see that thing leaks, so we ordered a part to be here. Our carrier is the company that's doing the update for us. They should have it by tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll be able to transfer everything from the temporary unit to Saturday, so then we'll send that back before we have to renew any kind of contract with them. The, the stuff, the recreation, it's, it's all, it definitely needs some work.
We all.
Me too.
We should be in the tent again. We bought a parts store. One of the major problems with that unit is, and it seems to be at the recreation one anywhere else, is people touch the thermostat, they keep turning it on. So what happens when the unit's not working to its full capacity, it freezes up, doesn't work at all. So that's why you see the dripping, everything freezes up, subject drip in the gym. So we shut it off, and we locked it out, and put a tie wrap on it. Somebody cut the tie wrap off and decided to turn it back on. You know, that's our meeting supervisor, it's Ann O'Brien, and the gentleman at the recreation club, John Paggi. They do a great job. He did order parts for it, we'll be updating it. And we did put money in capital budget to do with holding the unit. We're going to be putting the unit probably on roof because we have capital funds to extend the recreation, the gym out to the property line with fences. So we'll put that somewhere where it's not going to be intrusive to the future work. You will? There you go. I, when I go. I, when I go to the gym, I want sweat. I don't want anything to sit by the way.
That's why I don't go to the gym. And maybe that makes someone a little too. Uh, Nora Egan?
Uh, asked.
Okay. Eileen Hessian?
Hi, Eileen Hessian. Um, since everybody's giving some kudos, I'd like to thank Joe Brand especially for getting the, um, senior activities going again at the Center on Magnolia. He really worked hard and he's got a great program started. And also to thank Jennifer Cruz, who is just really doing a phenomenal job there. Um, the second thing I want to, I have a couple of things. I'm going to go through all of them. When you read Newsday and see our COVID numbers, it's embarrassing. We are the highest number on Long Island. There's only one other double-digit town and 58% vaccinated is not good. Uh, the head of New Zealand just closed down the entire country because one person had COVID. So I'm going to suggest that Donna close down all of Long Beach. And that would not allow anyone to leave the island until, but seriously, I'm, I'm happy the back mobile is around, but how can we get these people to? Not a good, it's an impossible question, but anyway, next. I would think that we'd be rolling in money if we are collecting fines for the people that are on the jetties, the people who have dogs on the boardwalk, all these small things. So I am curious, do we ever get money for that when they are fined or are they fined? And then I had brought up one other time, the boards on the boardwalk are really getting worse. They're popping up all over the place. And you know, somebody's going to sue us for breaking their ankle or something. And that is all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, no. No, it's not at all. I have one other thing. Sorry. Um, Newsday also had an article by Tom, about Tom Swasey and the American Rescue Plan and the money that came from that for all of Long Island. And he mentions that Huntington got $24 million, Oyster Bay got, I forget, $33 million. And the lowest amount they gave anybody was $30,000. Did we get any, any of that money?
Yes. Nina, can we move to that? One question. We'll vote.
Okay.
Oh, my God, it's right. Um, so American Rescue Plan, um, it's, the distribution is four million of these and, uh, based on the population and other factors, it comes to the city, he's, uh, about to get, so first one, we threw $3.4 million. It passed through for the state of New York and, uh, it's given to installments. We already got our first installment of $1.7 million. And, uh, we have to, um, segregate this amount into separate bank accounts because there's various stringent recording requirements and the first recording will become due in October of this year. So we, we will keep it segregated, um, as long as, uh, we have to, um, segregate it ourselves, we record it to the state, uh, to the US charity, uh, why are we keeping this amount of time? And the next, uh, the storm and the second storm will come out next summer. Yep? When?
Next summer.
Next summer?
Next summer. Probably July.
Um, the fines, we will get, we will, um, report back at the next council meeting how much we collect their fines so that you know. And then you have another question? I, I know it was fines.
What?
Boardwalk. He's here.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
As far as the boards on the boardwalk, you're right. Some of them do pop up with the United traffic, the pedestrian traffic, bicycles, the vehicles, they do pop up. We had, uh, our park was out there today, screw a few of them down. If you see something, please let us know. We do send people up, um, in some time, whether it was pretty, spread great things. If we see something, somebody complained, we take care of it right away. We do send people out in the spring to do a full swing at home boardwalk, make sure that everything's safe and all screwed down and then we do it again after the summer's over. But if you see something, let us know. We'll take care of the deal.
My idea was that the specials could have a spray can. Somehow, I don't intend to that, but there are all, all day laws.
Yeah. It's, we have, as you know, we have beautiful, there's a lot of people up there. If we mark it, I mean, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, if we mark it and we don't correct it right away, then we're, we're saying that we see the situation, if somebody does trip, you know, then we're notifying ourselves.
Sorry. Can you just clarify, you can email, like directly?
Sure. Email me at T. Kanner.
Just throw that outside.
We, we all know a little bit, right? I do that. C. A. N. N. C. A. N. N. E. R. at longbeachany.com. And the best of the call also, 516-704-7249. And thank you. Just so other people know also is that, uh, you know, Tom Kanner, he talks about the boardwalk and he does, um, a lot of, like, power washing area. People have brought up more bell.
That's sanitation.
Sanitation. So they do.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know.
Yeah. City's department. That's power washing.
They're doing a good job because people have brought up that area and, you know, you're going to have to address it. So I can understand, so I just want to thank you, so. I want to thank you too, David, because you're one of the best at the water, so you've got a lot to offer.
Um, also, there was a question, I think, uh, Mr. Lester, you asked if we are looking at the signs on the boardwalk to identify the white lane. It's been a little difficult, uh, what type of signs that we actually can put out, um, how we can identify the, uh, the lanes. We don't want people running into the sign because that's the liability to the city. Um, we are trying to use, uh, things that we can put down, um, on the boardwalk to identify that. So we are looking into that. And then I will talk to Commissioner Walsh about the bikes. I think we got, we started talking about this Zoom and just forgot about the other question.
I did.
All right. Thank you.
All right. That was live one. So thank you for your attention. Do we have rest of the live ones?